Good evening. I'd like to call the June 11th, 2018 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of speech.
And I'd like to introduce the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, who is a commission member. And to my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a commission member. To my far left is Steve Allenson, an alternate on the commission. And next to Steve is Rocco Madarazzo, who is our secretary. At the table to my left, the lower table to my left, is Cynthia Kleist, our recording secretary. And next to Cynthia, very shortly, will be Casey Hand, our town planner. I'm Jim Seichter, the chairperson of this commission. Our next order of business is to approve the minutes of the May 14th, 2018 meeting. Anyone like to make a motion or corrections addition to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve the minutes of the May 14th meeting as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And all abstain because I was not at that meeting. This brings us to our, actually, before we go to our first item on our agenda, I'd like to make some announcements as far as items that will not be heard this evening. The one item which has been withdrawn by the applicant is item number six on our agenda, which is a subdivision for one lot for Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company at 528 South Colony Street to create a new lot to be known as 10-20 Tully's Road. That application has been withdrawn. However, we have received from the applicant a refiling of that application. So obviously, that will not be heard. Item number seven on our agenda, also new business, is a site plan revision for Paradise Hills Vineyard at 15 Windswept Hill Road. That application will not be heard this evening. It's my understanding that there is still a decision yet to be made whether or not this application needs a wetland review. We have two other applications that will be continued this evening, items number four and five. That's for a special permit for fill-in excavation for Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company at 1020 Tully's Road, as well as item number five, a special permit for warehouse office, Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company at 1020 Tully's Road. The applicant has requested that this be continued to our next month's meeting. That being said, I'd entertain a motion to continue both of those applications to our July meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue the noted applications to our regular July meeting as suggested.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mrs. Hand, if I could just confirm, on Paradise Hills, you in fact did receive a letter or receipt of a letter from the applicant requesting that that application be continued?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. That being said, we're going to, it brings us to our first public hearing. It's a special permit, location and use Scrubbing Bubbles 3 at 488 South Colony Street. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, number 407-18, special permit, location of use for Scrubbing Bubbles 3 for an automotive dealership and repair facility at 448 North Colony Street. We have correspondence from Scrubbing Bubbles dated June 6, 2018, to Casey Hand, town planner. An interdepartmental notice, application 407-18, dated March 12, 2018, signed by the fire marshal. A correspondence dated April 5, 2018, referencing special permit, application 407-18. And interdepartmental referral, referencing application 403-18, dated 2918, signed by the senior engineer. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated April 4, 2018. Memorandum to Planning and Zoning Commission from Rob Baltimoreitis, dated April 6, 2018. Correspondence dated April 20, 2018, referencing special permit, application 407-18. Interdepartmental referral, referencing application 407-18, dated March 12, 2018, also signed by the fire marshal.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. I was remiss if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And also, Mr. Benoit, who is our vice chairperson, is not here this evening, or he's not here yet. I'm not sure if he will be here. So, Mr. Allenson, if you would please sit in for him on the applications until he does arrive. And sir, if you would please introduce yourself and please give us an overview of your application.
My name is Narish Komal, N-A-R-E-S-H, last name is K-O-M-A-L.
Sir, if you could please pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you, if you would, please.
My name is Narish Komal. First name is Narish, N-A-R-E-S-H, last name is K-O-M-A-L. I live in North Haven, 27 Muscat Drive, North Haven, Connecticut, 06473. And I own this bunch of Scrubbing Bubbles, both end of the town. So, I mean, looking at the demographic of city, I was thinking it will be a best use for me because of the bunch of car washes in the town. It's not making enough for the business. So I was trying to see if I can open up a dealership and repair shop over there. That's what we're trying to try to do there.
And if you could just give us a little explanation as far as exactly what you're looking to understand. As a dealer and repairer, but as far as the number of cars that you're looking to have on that, how you anticipate the dealership to operate as far as hours, those types of things, please.
The car washes have more cars on the, more traffic with the car wash. But with the dealership, I don't think there's as much traffic. Traffic would be less than what we have. We have it now. And as compared to now, the traffic will be a lot less, I think. Because it's not, car wash creates a lot of, bring a lot of cars on the premises. But the dealership and the repair shop, they don't create any more traffic.
Okay. Mrs. Hand, do you have any comments before I ask commission members and go to the public?
You do have some comments in your packets from various departments. So I would recommend that you make those conditions of approval. Generally, my comments have been addressed. As I noted in my comment letter, the application will require, as a condition of approval, either approval of DOT or more likely just an indication from DOT that no additional permits are needed because Route 5 is a state right-of-way. The other thing that I guess I would point you to is comments from the town engineer just regarding the display area up front. And I think part of what he's looking for is confirmation or a discussion with the applicant that that's enough of a display area for the applicant.
Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Kohan?
Yeah, just a few questions. You know, based on Casey's, no, I, you know, how many, you know, car, where are you going to have the cars? How many cars are you going to have, you know, for sale? And are you going to have cars, you know, out in front of Scrubbing Bubbles? If so, how many? Are they going to be on the side?
It all depends, you know, on the, how many we buy and how many we sell. It wouldn't be, it's not like other dealership will have a lot of cars. But you'll have, I think, my friend, Mr. Adrian, he was working on more than I do. But I think we have, can we have him here? Mr. Adrian?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
He has more information than what, because he's working on this one.
That's fine. And again, name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adrian, A-D-R-I-A-N, Fisser, F-I-S-S-E-R. I also live in North Haven. I'm giving him a hand. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a lawyer. I've just got maybe more information than he does. I hope I can answer. Together, we can answer your questions. You have a plan in front of you with the cars, do you there? You have the site plan. It's sort of self-explanatory. We're going to have four cars out front because of the configuration of the driveway. And it's basically a repair shop with an auxiliary use of cars. We don't have, it's not like Valenti where we have oceans of frontage and we could put cars on display. So we're just going to squeeze a few in the front. And then in the back, there's others underway, whether they're under repair or they're waiting for motors, or they're coming from the auction. They're going to get inspected. Generally, only going to see four cars in front. And then you also have the handicap parking in the front. Everything else will be virtually invisible behind the building, including behind the dumpster. And the ones that are going nowhere until we're ready are completely out of view against the railroad tracks. And I don't even know if that number is going to ever be satisfied of 20. We've been nowhere near that need. But we just chopped the land up for what it's worth in the back there to use the space. That's the worst possible scenario, I think.
Okay. No, that looks fine to me. That does answer my question.
It's just, you know, his accent is difficult too. I always complain about it. But he owns the Scrubbing Bubbles at Chef's. He owns the Scrubbing Bubbles over by CVS. He owns the one across from Executive Jeep inside there.
D'Arby.
Yeah. And this is, so he has four. And it's just, it's not a good use for this property whatsoever. It'd be less traffic. It's 24 hours a day at the moment. They come and go. And in an automotive business, it's Monday to Friday, 8 to 5, Saturday, maybe half a day. Nothing at Saturday afternoon and night. And the nice thing is, it's right next door to AutoZone, so the parts are close.
Right.
The cars can move out quickly.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Other commission members. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the plan, and I understand currently it's used as a car wash. According to the letter we have for the water department, it said...
Which, I'm sorry, which department?
The water department.
Okay.
It said during a phone conversation with the applicant, he indicated that no modifications to the building were made as part of this application. And one bay will be used for auto repair and one bay will be used for washing. So it's a single bay garage?
Not that I've ever heard of, no. I don't know who he was talking to. Did you tell him that? Water Authority? No, it's a two-bay garage with no car wash whatsoever, is what last I knew.
This is from Eric Kruger, who's the senior engineer for the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer. And he indicated he had a conversation with, just says, the applicant.
Mark, okay.
So both bays will be used for auto repairs now?
That's, it was designed for two bays for auto repair because that's basically a requirement for the state to give you a license.
Okay, so the plan is to use both bays for auto repair?
Well, he has to make the final determination.
Maybe talk to Jeremy, not with me.
I haven't talked to Jeremy at all. I don't know, Mark. I can't answer for you.
But I think if we need to change that, we need to change it. We don't have to have a...
The state of Connecticut, I understand, the motor vehicle department requires two bays for a repair license.
Maybe his understanding was we do need to wash the car when we do the service.
Yeah, I mean, you wash the car, you go off the road and you wash the car. You go a block and you're at your other wash.
I'm sure they talked to Jeremy.
Yeah. In order to get a license over there for used car, you know, for car sales, you need two bays, is my understanding. So that letter may be older or conflict, obviously.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I'm not sure, I've not seen you gentlemen here before because we rely on input from the town departments for us to make a decision. So I'm looking at the letter when I reviewed it over the weekend. I'm thinking, oh, it's one bay. So, which, and again, I don't know, through you, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if the town planner would just need to go back to Water and Sewer because they're always concerned about different things than we are.
I mean, I think that from their perspective, typically, when we get these, the relevant conversation is what's in that paragraph after that, which is the question about whether or not there's washing and if so, of vehicles. And if so, whether or not there's an oil-water separator. Usually, they don't take a position about the number, the number of bays per se. So, I mean, you could make, if you were inclined to move forward, you could always make a condition that that modification be subject to approval by the Water and Sewer.
If I could interrupt, there is an existing water, oil-water separator, I believe, 1,000-gallon.
There is, sir.
Understood, yeah.
I don't know what they would be nervous about over there washing cars because that's what they're doing.
Okay. If I could, then, can we talk about the layout of the plan and the sales vehicle display? Because according to the plan I'm looking at, they're going to display on an angle on the entrance drive.
Yeah, we're going to follow the existing driveway there.
And I guess the concern I have is because it's a tight site with a car wash and it's going to be, appear based upon the plan to be a little tighter, used for, there's only spots for four, only four spots shown for vehicle display.
Up front, correct.
Right. So that all the other storage will remain in back. And I, I'm not, I would be remiss if I'm looking at the plan, the employee parking, because it says here, you have...
Employees along the side.
Right.
One, two, three there.
How many employees would you have?
I should anticipate at three.
Okay. And you understand there's no display of the vehicles on the grass or...
Oh, absolutely, yep.
...area?
Yep, yep. It's elementary.
Well, I want to make sure to state it for the record because there should be no, there should be no misunderstanding.
Hold it against us, correct.
Okay, I'll let you finish. So I guess the issue is you have vehicle display area for four cars only on the curve. And then the parking, I guess it's a lot going on for a small site.
Yeah. But really, it's, this is, it's all inanimate objects in the back there. There's cars and cars and cars parked, whether they're under repair, whether they're coming and going, whether they're for sales.
Okay. A couple of the things that the town planner had mentioned in her letter. Do you have a separate landscape plan?
I just, I guess what exists is what we have there, except there's no grass all the way back. I guess the grass goes like three-quarters of the way back. It all exists. The trees are there. Everything's there in place.
And then in regard to the letter, there is an issue regarding the existing sign. Are you prepared to discuss the sign?
Yeah.
Okay. So the sign there that's now is non-conforming to the town regulations. So the sign will need to be removed back and pushed back on the site if you intend to keep the sign. Because a sign of the property is not compliant with our current zoning regulations.
Really? Okay.
And will need to be moved back to be 10 feet from the property line unless the applicant can demonstrate that a sign has existed on that location since 1958.
I haven't done this a bit before at the time. That's impossible. Okay.
I bought it as it is. I don't know what I did.
We'll move, gotta move it. Okay, we'll do whatever we gotta do.
I would, I mean, I just want to make sure to put this on the record so you're aware of it because you're assisting. The other, the other point I would make is it's standard for the commission on this type of application, we don't allow outside storage. So we don't allow outside storage of car parts.
Yeah, junk.
Your junk is someone else's treasure. So I just, you know, our rules are that there be no parts, no junk vehicles. They should not be kept out of the building at all. Because that, even if, even behind the building, that would be outside our zoning regulation.
Absolutely, okay.
So you understand and agree to that?
Totally, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Mr. Madarazzo?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I see the fire marshal has made a few comments. Has he reviewed these plans? And I guess this question is more for Casey regarding egress in and out of this lot. I'm just looking how tight it is between the building and the property lines. Got 16 foot, 3 inches on one side, 17 on the other. With the three spaces in the back, if you put a car in that space closest to the building, what does that do for bottlenecking down?
So you, I mean, you have the same information I do. He's seen the plan. So his, his comment was really more about the internal, the need for the internal fit-out. Because it's one way, we require 12 feet, you, under your zoning regs, require a minimum 12 feet. I think they require somewhere around 15 for their trucks to get around. So he didn't comment, so it doesn't appear, and the comment wasn't made when the car wash was put in. So it doesn't appear that he per se has an objection. That being said, if the commission thinks, I mean, it is somewhat tight getting kind of between the building and those spaces. So if the commission feels that that isn't enough, that you'd like some additional clear space, you could require that the applicant, you know, remove one or more of those spaces over to the side or in the front. You know, you could have that conversation with the applicant. If you feel like there needs to be some additional room, that's, that's a requirement you could impose.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, when this, I don't know if it's lined now for these three spaces in the back on that south corner. I don't know if you put a vehicle there, if that creates a pinch point between, say, the nose of the vehicle and the corner of the building. If that reduces the amount of...
Are you talking to me? I'm not sure who you're talking to.
Well, kind of.
I think he's talking to right now.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't want to be rude and not answer you.
Yep, not at all.
So maybe the question through the chair to the applicant is, would you be willing to give up those, those three spaces and assign three others?
Which three are we talking, behind the building?
The three employee parking spaces to the...
On the side?
Yeah.
Or move them somewhere? Yeah.
Yeah, and assign...
As long as you don't take other space. There's not endless traffic going through here 24 hours a day. It looks like it's a main thoroughfare with the arrows, but there's not non-stop traffic. You, if you're coming in to drop your car off, you're dropping your car off and you're leaving.
I think we all, I think we all realize that. But I think what we're saying is it's a very tight space.
Absolutely is. And we've tried to squeeze all we could legally.
I understand. But I think it's a, I could just interject.
I think if you would like those taken out of the side there, the employee...
It's a very tight space. You know, we, I think this town is very friendly to auto dealers, repairers, whatever. I think we're very friendly. Unfortunately, with some of the repairers and sales, we've not had good results.
Compliance, sure.
We've had people who've come in and made representations. And then all of a sudden, on small spaces, while the number...
Chaos.
Sir, let me finish, please. That the, the number of cars that we've seen on those spaces have, you know, have exceeded what's been required or what's been approved. And then when it comes to enforcement, it becomes very difficult to enforce. So I think that's one of the issues that Mr. Madarazzo is expressing. Again, I don't mean to cast, you know, a net over everyone as far as my concern with how some businesses operate and how some feel that they can come and make representations. And then at the end of the day, they sing a different song. So just with that, I think that was, Mr. Madarazzo was trying to express. But certainly, if you'd like to continue.
In part, yeah, absolutely. Also, a reason I bring it up too, is that I don't believe there's going to be a continuous line of traffic going through this lot. But we have to take into consideration too, safety for all concerned. You know, your customers as well as the public, as well as yourselves, for the building and the lot layout and where vehicles will be and pinch points for, you know, fire trucks to get through. So there's a lot more to consider than, than just if there's going to be someone driving through there or not.
Yeah.
I also was wondering too, is the, the washing, car washing system or drain system going to be made inoperable? Because from what I'm hearing is the state of Connecticut requires two service bays.
When they're made inoperable, your car washing system, you have to, you're making the car washing system totally inoperative. Yeah, you have to, yeah.
Is that, is that, I haven't, I didn't see anything saying that that's stated, that that's what was going to occur.
Okay.
Again, like, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Russell, the other guy over there, brought up too, again, the vehicles being on display out in front.
It's about our only hope is those four out there trying to squeeze them in for display. Otherwise, they're invisible, they're all behind the buildings.
Well, again, I'm just wondering too, what does that do if there's a vehicle parked there and you've got vehicles coming out of the bay? Or I don't know where they're coming out of the bay and going to. I'm assuming being picked up or going to the back rear of the lot. What, what does that do to the means of egress through the lot if vehicles are there? And let's say you've got a vehicle coming out of the bay and you park it on the exit side of the bay. And now you've got a pinch point between that, that vehicle number one on the south and the car that's out of the bay. I mean, these are all what-ifs, but...
Yeah.
But it's just, just some of, you know, my concerns. And with that, I'll turn back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. I believe Mr. Allenson had some comments he'd like to make or questions.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman. I, counting the simple math, there's 11 spots for customers to park? Just want to make sure I'm reading this correct. Looks like it's two, three, and then six?
It says, total parking is 14, but we've given 19. Handicap is one, employee is three, and outdoors way back there is 20.
Right, so, so if...
So what, I'm sorry, what was your question one more time?
So to rephrase it, the storage parking, looks like there's storage for 20 vehicles all the way in the back.
That's correct.
Coming forward, it looks like, just coming towards street side, it looks like there's six for customers, right? And then three for customers, two for customers, the three along the side, that parallel parking area, and then one handicapped in the front.
Correct.
Do you anticipate the 11 in the middle, that six, three, and two? Do you anticipate needing that many? Or is that something that you'd be willing to work with?
I'd rather have space there than have cars. I got nowhere to put them. So I sort of try and designate it. But if I'm, if you want me to move the three employees over, then I certainly can't tamper with those spaces there. If I take them from the side and put them, they have to park somewhere else themselves. They'll be parking in the six, in the back there or somewhere.
I mean, looking at this, and again, my concerns are tight, are the tightness of the, of the space here. And again, just to echo the ingress-egress issue, personally, I don't know that all three of those need to move. But maybe the one that's closest to the building, at least. That's just my, my thought on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commission members? Yes, Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Casey, is there any issue with respect to the vehicle displays in the front yard area?
The, they do leave the required 12-foot distance between the... The, they do leave the required twelve-foot distance between the parking space and the display area. So, in terms of your actual requirements, um, the twelve-foot requirement, there, there's not a, they are compliant with that. I think it's an unusual configuration, um, and I think this is a special, well, I know, this is a special permit, so, um, you can certainly, as the commission, make a decision about whether or not you think that's appropriate. I think probably it's, it, it might be helpful to turn that question again back to the applicant as to whether or not the four, and I, I think that's sort of what the town engineer was getting at in his comments, is whether or not the four spaces as proposed are sufficient for your needs and to sort of make sure that it's clear on the record that it is limited to four, because anything beyond that is not going to fit there and is going to create circulation issues. So, I think we'd wanna make sure that's clear on the record. So, um, it, it's, it's sort of an unusual configuration. I mean, usually, typically with those display areas, it's more of a squared off area. This is more of a rounded area, so it's, ends up sort of unusually configured in terms of where the spaces are oriented. It doesn't create a non-conformity issue per se.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess my concern is just the layout of, um, the vehicles being displayed from the street. I know, you know, um, I haven't been up here too long, but I, I've heard a, a number of comments about, um, cars being displayed, you know, close to the street or close to Route Five or what cars look like or, or the layout. And, and I am a little concerned by this. Uh, I, I'm concerned that, uh, when you drive by this, you're gonna take a look at it, and it's just gonna look like cars parked, uh, any which way. And I don't know that that's gonna be the best, uh, uh, best view from the street, um, uh, from my, my point of view.
Like I said, it's unusual, and, and the more sort of typical configuration you would see would be to have the, um, kind of where the driveway opens up is to have it more square so that they could either, either parallel or even angled park the cars. That's not the configuration they currently have. It doesn't mean they, they couldn't do that if, you know, I mean, that's something that perhaps the applicant could propose to do if the commission were more comfortable with that. Because I, I think it is, I, I mean, I think it's a valid point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Again, as far as my comments, uh, as I initially mentioned, I think this site is certainly a very small site, and I'm certainly, and I'm concerned, given the, given the fact that, uh, what I've seen on other sites, and I don't mean to mean, don't mean to imply that the applicant would follow those procedures, but again, this is not an application or approval. If we do approve it specifically for him, it's for the property, which means anybody could be here. And again, when I look at this site, I, to me, I just think there's, it's, to use your words, you're squeezing as much in as you can, and you're squeezing it in. I don't think that that's, from a planning standpoint, I don't think that that's a good approach, and certainly one that I could not support. When I'm looking at the, the four spaces up front, certainly the first two that are closest to, uh, you know, North Colony Road, I think those spaces are almost an accident waiting to happen, especially the one that's on the, on the north side. You know, the way it's, the way it's positioned for anybody coming in, the angle that it's at. In my mind, I think the best thing that you could do or the most that you could possibly fit in there, at least that I think I could support, would be two, would be two spaces in that area. You know, looking at the employee parking, certainly space number, uh, well, you have number three in there. It would be the, the space that's, the employee parking space that's closest to North Colony Street. Again, there, there's, I think as Mr. Matarazzo pointed out, there's really a pinch point there between that space where a car would park in the building. There may be enough room for someone to, for a car to go by, but I just don't think that that's, that's appropriate. I think that's too much of a, you know, of a pinch point. My other issue is, again, I don't mean to cast everybody under the same net, but we've had, you know, situations where we find people that are parking on, on the grass.
Yeah.
So, you know, in this particular case, again, I would, in, in my mind, to make this something that I could possibly support would be to see some type of, you know, a barrier, a, a very low fence, something along that, the entryway that would prohibit anybody from being able to park a car there. So, we don't have anybody putting displays, you know, on the grass, 'cause I think it's clear if we go up Colony Road, we can see a lot of that happening right now. And again, I, I don't mean to, you know, indicate that this gentleman would do that, but, uh, the property could change hands at any time and we could have someone else there, so...
It goes on.
I mean, that's, that's my, uh, how other commission members feel, I'm not so sure, but that, that's, that's where, where I would be at the, at the, I won't say at the most generous point, but really at the most generous point, looking at how small this site is and, and what you'd like to do with it.
Yeah.
I don't know if, uh, she, I don't know if you'd like to respond to that, or if not, well, this is a public hearing, we'll go out to the public.
Yeah, yeah, you can listen, but, um, you know, we just wanna get as much use out of the property as we can, and, and we will go by what your recommendations are, because that's the only way it's gonna happen. So, if, if you think that it's really hazardous to have two cars parked on the north side, then I guess you need to chop it to three or, and, and you put your barrier, just lay out the terms and, and we'll, uh, we'll see if we can live with it. I think that's probably the easiest way. I'm sure that can happen.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public would like to speak on the application? If there are, please come to the microphone, state your name and address in your comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to, I don't know, Mrs. Hine, if you have any other comments that you would like to make?
Uh, so I just, I don't know if, if the commission or if the applicant wants to take some additional time to address some of the comments that were expressed by the commission tonight, or if you want to propose some conditions of approval that you would agree to based on what you heard tonight at this point. It sounds to me like, um, at least the commission, and I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but like there, you know, like there are some spaces that there, the commission is concerned about that, um, you might want to have some time to address.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain what was a thought necessarily and what was like a requirement. There's, it's like a borderline. He had thoughts about employee parking moving over, and then I don't know if that's something you really want or just a random thought, so I'm not sure what, what the final...
I appreciate that.
What the final outcome is, and, you know, it, I, I don't know what you really would like and what you think would be a nice idea, but it's okay that it didn't happen.
Okay, I guess I just ask then commission members for, uh, further thoughts as far as the display area. And we've had some discussion on various items here. You know, some are with respect to the number of vehicles being displayed, with respect to eliminating at least one of the employee parking spaces. And then, at least my suggestion was also putting something up that would prohibit, uh, the ability to park on the, uh, on the landscaping up front. I think I've stated as far as what I felt comfortable with.
A minor...
That's certainly just my, uh, my opinion. We're five gentlemen voting on this application, so let's hear your thoughts. Anybody, everybody? We'll start on the end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I personally would like to see that display area squared off to some extent. I, I think the way that it is now with the, with the curves and then the cars parked around the curve, I think does create pinch points, as the chairman pointed out. It might be better if those areas were squared off. That's just my thought, other people may have different...
Mrs. Hine, how would that impact the landscaping requirement?
Uh, I was just looking at that. Uh, the property is in, uh, I believe in a CB forty zone, which means they're required a twenty-five-foot landscaped area, so it appears that they would have the ability to do that. They would obviously have their plans updated to reflect that and to make sure that the, the twenty-five feet worked.
Is that it, Mr. Hine, and we'll move on to other people? Other commission members?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, that's fine.
That's it.
I guess we'll go down the line. Mr. Cohen?
Um, yeah, I drew a little picture myself here on, on, you know, how to display the cars and, you know, just cut the, the top off the, where it's rounded and just, you know, the two cars on each side would be kind of straight in, um, you know, facing the road. And I, based on what Casey was saying, it, it looks like that would still, you know, have the twenty-five feet that's required. And I, I'd be fine with that. And, you know, the employee parking, um, yeah, I think moving, um, uh, space number three, um, I think it could move that without too much trouble.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based upon the information that was presented, you know, my, my hope would be that the applicant would come back with revised plans showing, um, adjusted vehicle display area as, as expressed by the, the prior commissioners and the chairman. The angle, the angled of those does make it very difficult. I made a note here, I, I do think the three employee spots on the southern side of the building on that are, are unwarranted at this point, because it does impact the ability for cars to drive around the building. And so, the way, knowing that you're taking an existing auto, excuse me, an existing car wash, which is designed for one way in and one way out, it's, it's a challenge for, for your customers and potentially people, so I would be in favor of removing those three, um, employee spots and, and give free access, um, on the southern side of the building would be my comments at this point. But again, it's, it's your application.
Moving on to the left, we'll start on the end, Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said before, I think this spot that has the three marked in it for the employee spots on the south side, I would like to see that one given up as far as the front side and the display area. I agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons, I, I'd like to see a revised drawing. I don't know if this is squared off on the, uh, I guess it would be the right side of the drawing, the north side of the drawing, uh, where if those two cars came in frontways so that the front of the vehicle was facing North Colony Road, I don't know if that would create an additional pinch point for the handicapped, handicapped spot, excuse me. And I'm just not sure about the spacing there. So, I'd like to see a drawing as far as how that would impact that space. As far as on the, uh, other side for the display, I'm a lot less concerned. Uh, I do agree with you, Mr. Chairman, about some fencing or some sort of, um, impediment to keep cars from being put on the, on the grass. Other than that, I think it, I, I think I would be okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And wrapping up with Mr. Matarazzo.
As I said, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to see a revised plan on this, on this application. Something also a little more informative as far as those concerned pinch point areas. Also possibly, I think it, it might be prudent to redesign the entryway and maybe square that off. I'd be more apt to approve this if, if we change that up a little bit. As it stands right now, I couldn't, I couldn't support this application. I'd also like to see more of response from our fire marshal regarding the layout and if he has any concerns. Also, I don't think, I don't think all of our town planners' questions were answered. I don't, I don't see a checklist representing...
Mrs. Hine, are all your questions concerning the application addressed by the applicant?
Uh, generally, yes. The, we, we did go, I, we did go over everything with them, but there were, as I said in my comments, there were some things that I wanted sort of discussed on the record tonight in terms of, you know, how the, where, where the different parking was getting designated and things of that nature, but I'm, generally, I mean, they did locate the dumpster, they did locate the trees, so they did do the, the sort of plan-related things that, that I asked them to do.
Good. Is there a letter from the Connecticut DOT?
No, we don't, we typically don't get that till afterwards, so usually that's a, a condition of approval, and then they will submit something to me. They, they won't review something until it has local approval. And this, this probably will not require anything from the DOT because of, um, there aren't any new curb cuts and because of the limited amount of parking, but I like to have them tell me that rather than for me to guess.
Aren't you asking for a curb cut by squaring it off?
No, it wouldn't be a new curb, there wouldn't be a change to the, that would only be if you were actually impacting the right-of-way itself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What if I were to have one car on each side? And agree to it?
That would be agreeable to me, but it depends upon where those car, where that car is, uh, where the car is located.
Between the two. Just in there now.
You know, I, I think at this point in time, and again, I don't...
Yeah, I'm not trying to monopolize the night either.
I think you've heard from all the, you know, commission members, I think there's a couple of options. I think the first option is if you would like to commission to act on the plans that you presented to us. I think you've heard from the commission members, there's probably not a very good chance of getting an approval on that.
I heard that.
So, uh, just to sum up, and if other commission members disagree with me, certainly they can disagree with you, but I think, you know, we, we all have a little bit different view on this, but I think in general, uh, perhaps the majority of commission members could support some revised plans that showed the, in fact, four cars parked on either side, but those cars are not parked on an angle, that if you can, uh, square off the parking on some of that landscaping, and then the remaining, the landscaping that remains, that, I'm not looking for a big barrier, but I'm looking for something just that prohibits anyone from parking on the landscape barrier. And the other would be, I think there's a general consensus of, you know, eliminating those three employee parking spaces. Is it fair to say that commission members would be able to, and I won't say support it, because we, we'd have to look at your plans, but that's what we would be at least looking for you to do.
I'll take everything into consideration and we will modify it.
So, I think that's, that would be direction. Again, if you come back with those plans, I'm not going to say it's going to be approved, because we, it still needs to be reviewed, but I think that's a direction that we're giving.
It's more agreeable than what you're looking at tonight.
Yeah. And I just ask, Mrs. Hine, do you have any other final comments that you'd like to make?
No, I just think if you're inclined, you should make a motion to continue.
Yeah. At this point in time, I'd like to make a, I'd ask for a motion rather to continue the public hearing to our July meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to continue the application for Scrub and Bubbles Three at four forty-eight North Colony Street to our July meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
I...
If I could just for one second, I wanna thank Casey for getting us this far.
Good enough, appreciate it.
All right, gentlemen, we look forward to seeing you at our next month's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Which brings us to our next item, which is item number two. It's a special permit from office to studio for music lessons at, for A Tangiri at eight sixty-two East Center Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his or her presentation. And Mr. Matarazzo, if you please read the legal, legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, uh, number four zero eight dash one eight, special permit changed from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use for, I believe, Tangredi?
Yes.
Tangredi?
Yes.
Will allow the conversation, uh, conversation, conversion of office space to a music studio at eight sixty-two East Center Street. We have a correspondence dated June first, two thousand eighteen, um, referencing application four zero eight dash one eight. Interdepartmental referral regarding application four zero eight dash one eight dated June eleventh, two thousand eight. This is signed by the fire marshal. We have an inter-office departmental, um... We have a inter-office departmental, um, interdepartmental referral regarding, uh, referencing application 408-18 dated June 11th, 2018. Uh, this is signed by, uh, let me sign that. But it's, um, signed by Eric Kruger, uh, senior engineer. And that would, that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. If the applicants would please, uh, state their name and address and, uh, begin their presentation.
Yes, uh, my name is Andre Tangredi. I'm at 12 Maple Avenue, Unit 1, Wallingford.
My name is John Tangredi, T-A-N-G-R-E-D-I. I live at 39 Western Sands in Wallingford, resident.
Thank you. And if you please begin your presentation.
Uh, yes, um, we're here tonight because, uh, I own a music studio that I teach, uh, students, uh, from the ages of five to, uh, early seventies. And, uh, I've been at the location where I'm at in Wallingford on Route 5 now for three years, which is a nice location, but, uh, it, it's a bit small. So over the course of the three years, you know, I've been making an effort to find a location that would, would better suit the students in terms of, uh, the parking issue that I have now. Uh, also the safety issue, uh, where I'm at on Route 5, uh, coming around the, uh, the, the side of the building to get into the front. And also for, you know, waiting room area, uh, making it a little bit more comfortable, comfortable for people. And those are the main reasons, aside from, uh, a little bit of a better building that I would actually have to pay a little bit less, uh, in terms of the upkeep because it's a, a little bit newer.
Sure.
The location that it is at now is at the corner of Christian Street and Route 5 with a traffic light and a crossing, uh, button on the, on the corner there.
Sure. Okay. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Hein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just have a few questions.
Sure.
What are your hours of operation?
Um, I usually start work at about 11, uh, and, well, sometimes 10, but usually I'm done by 7 to 8 o'clock at night. And I believe the, the original, um, or the second revision of the, uh, hours for the building that zoned his office was from 7 to 8. So I actually kind of plan to stay within what they have set up already.
Okay. And, um, how many students do you have coming to your, your place at any one time?
Uh, right now, it's just myself as the teacher instructor. Um, I do multiple instruments with people. So, uh, at any one time, um, you know, I have my car and, you know, a student who's in with me and a student that might be coming in next. So at, at a total, probably a max of three cars. Um, I can't see really more than that, sometimes three to four, uh, which brings up the issue with where I'm at now. I'm actually located underneath, um, two stories of residence and there's six parking lot spaces there. So, uh, early evening when everyone's actually home, it, it leaves one spot for a lot of the customers that come in. And when we have them park in the neighbors', uh, which is a shared parking lot, there's often a little bit of problems. You know, they don't like that too much and, which I do understand. So that's been a big issue for us. And I believe that the new place has, um, been lined for, uh, 11 spots with a handicap spot as well. So i- in terms of how much traffic, not much more than I have now. You know, like I said, three to four maybe cars at a time. And then there's also hours throughout the day where I'm actually not teaching. So it's limited then obviously to just my own.
Oh, okay. And so, so you're the, the sole teacher?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and do you plan on, I assume you, you can't do it at your present building, but do you have any plans on, um, offering any classes outside when the weather's nice?
Uh, no, that's not something that I've thought to do, no.
Okay. I ask only because you're going to be closer to our neighborhood and, and so there's some concern there. Um, personally, I, I, I'm in favor of this. I'd like to see that building, um, occupied. And I think this is a, a great, uh, great project, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Mr. Fitzsimmons, you'd like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I assume you've received the letter that was read into the record, um, from June 1st, uh, from the, the town planner regarding the building?
Yes.
Okay. So you are aware that there are a few outstanding site work items that were never completed when it was converted from a gas station to an office?
Yes.
Okay. So the, as a condition of approval, they need to be completed prior to any new occupation of the building? Is the owner aware of that?
Yes, uh, that would be Jeff, Jeff Routman. He definitely is aware. Uh, just for the record, he's, uh, actually helped me quite a bit to get this set to where it is. Recently doing the lot lines and planting the trees along the, uh, the side of the building. Uh, also we have some trees that need to be planted in the front. Uh, and there was some talk about a dumpster, uh, pad. He mentioned to me that, uh, he doesn't really see a need for it as I don't create that kind of garbage. Um, so if, if there's a way that we don't need to do that, that would be great. But if we have to, that's something that I guess he's willing to do as well because he's been pretty helpful.
Um, to, to echo Mr. Hein, I, I, I think this intended use is extremely less than the gas station that was there before. And it's even less than the office that was performed. It is a nonconforming, a nonconforming use because it's in the residential, your, your neighbors are all residential. But I, I think, knowing the history of that site, I, I think this less intense, less nonconformity certainly i- is consistent with, with the regulations. So I have no problem with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Any other? Mrs. Hand, with respect to the dumpster, the need or the nonneed for the dumpster, given the gentleman's, uh, comments?
Um, I did talk to the property owner about that today. And actually, uh, what, what we talked about was it, it's shown on the plan. Um, if he doesn't have a need, we don't require that you have a dumpster. We just require that if you have it, it's in the right spot and it's screened. So if they opt not to have a dumpster and they have a garbage can and they keep their garbage inside, you know, or they, they have like a garbage can that they, that they put, um, put out or what have you, that's, that's fine. So I told him, just leave the dumpster on the plan. And then that way, if some other tenant in the future, they, or if for some reason they decided to put out the dumpster, we'd have a location where it goes. Um, but I, it's, it's not required. So that could, that could be used as an extra parking space otherwise.
So I think you have a dumpster or no dumpster, that's really your, it stays on the plans, but it's your decision.
Okay.
And again, then as far as just relining the, uh, relining the spaces. And I just kind of echo what Mr. Fitzsimmons and, uh, Mr. Hein said. Certainly, uh, looking at this, to me, it's a, a less intense use. And I know you're not the owner of the property, but the owner of the property, I think he did a, certainly a very nice job in cleaning that property up. You know, it was, I think, most of us know, it was a gas station. It was a bit of a derelict property. There was, you know, a lot of, uh, overgrown, uh, vegetation in various parts of the property. And if I look at it now, I think it's a very attractive property. So I'm certainly, uh, you know, certainly in support of this application. But this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on the application? If there are, please come forward, name an address and your comments. Seeing none, uh, I'll just bring it back to Mrs. Hand. If you had any final comments? And then I'll go for the commission for any final comments before I close the public hearing.
Yeah, just quickly, um, they did, uh, the majority of the site issues have been addressed. The other ones, I'm comfortable, I'm confident those will get addressed. Um, the striping, so the, just to fill you in, the property owner did stripe last week. Um, and the, there was one thing they added in, he added in two spaces to the east side of the building. And I think only one fits, um, in order to have enough backout space. So I talked to him about that. That's fine. We're going to address that. But so you may end up with one additional space over, I mean, it fits. So, so I told him that would, that would be all right as long as it showed on the final plan. Just you, I, I think you should have in your motion some formal conditions in regard to what was discussed in terms of hours, um, and, uh, maybe just sort of a blanket condition that, um, traffic needs are not to exceed what's, or parking needs are not to exceed what's, what's provided for on the site. Um, and then the last thing, I, I, maybe I missed this, but I know we had talked about it. Um, sound sort of deadening, you do have some components of that in the building, right?
Yes, the building is actually constructed, uh, quite a bit better than where I'm at right now. So I believe the outside wall is a brick with the inside cinder block. And inside, the only room that really would be an issue is the drum room, as we probably all know. And I do have, uh, you know, a couple of thousand dollars worth of sound material, um, that I have in the studio that I currently work in that is, uh, based for sound deadening. That usually will do the trick. Um, but if it so needs to, we'll, we'll do more. That's not a very, uh, intensive job to figure out. I definitely can make that very comfortable for anybody. You probably wouldn't hear it, um, from the two side properties. As I went and, uh, said hello to those neighbors, they were very, uh, supportive. In fact, I think one of the kids was a drummer too, his son. So, but yeah, we can definitely, uh, take care of that. So there's no problem.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Any other commission members like to make any, uh, further comments before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And now I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a special permit changed from one nonconforming use to another not more intense nonconforming use for Tangredi to allow the conversion of the office space at 862 East Center Street to a music studio, has shown on plans entitled Improvement Location Survey, Proposed Site Development Plan, map depicting land now informally Alberta Management Incorporated, 862 East Center Street, Wallingford, Connecticut dated April 30th, 2013, updated to May 30th, 2013, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated 6/1/18. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Seat Engineer dated 5/31/18. Number three, um, hours of operation to be limited, to be limited to, as discussed during tonight's public hearing. And number four, parking needs to be contained within the site and no off-site parking permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Brings us to, uh, our next item, which is a, uh, special permit for retail one residential apartment to two residential apartments for M. Scarpa at 222 North Cherry Street. Again, if the applicant and/or his representative, please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation. And Mr. Matarazzo, please note all, please lea- read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal, uh, notice, uh, application, uh, sorry, legal notice, uh, number 409-18, special permit changed from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use for, uh, Mr. Scarpa to allow the conversion from retail, uh, one residential apartment to two residential apartments at 222 North Cherry Street. We have an application referencing 409-18 dated 5/25/18. Correspondence dated, uh, June 6th, 2018, referencing special permit application 409-18. Interdepartmental referral, or is the application 409-18 dated June 11th, 2018. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated June 7th, 2018. And that would be all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. If the applicant's represented, please introduce yourself and begin their presentation.
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lockton Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Michael Scarpa, who is present with me at the table. This is, uh, an application for a special permit to change from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. The property was, previously had a small residential unit and a store on the first floor of the building and an apartment or residential unit up on the second floor. Neither the store nor the first floor residential unit has been occupied, uh, but the house has never been, it's not been occupied for some time, excuse me, but the house has not been converted to a single-family residence. The building has two separate entrances and has two separate, uh, electrical services. With our application, uh, we did provide an aerial photograph of the property showing that it has adequate space for the required parking. And we also submitted a list of nearby properties that are two or three family homes. The applicant is prepared to comply with the recommendations or requirements contained within the Wallingford Water and Sewer Division memo. Neither the fire marshal nor Casey has, uh, our town planner, excuse me, has indicated any objection. We believe that this is an appropriate use for the area, um, as evidenced by the fact that there are several two or three family homes in the area. But we also, um, in light of the, um, new railroad station being open and the desire of the commission as stated in the plan of construction and development to have housing that is, uh, oriented toward the transit exit, we think this might, uh, would be a very good use for this particular area. I think we've complied with the regulations and would hopefully ask for your approval tonight.
Good enough. Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Allenson.
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Um, as far as the, uh, interoffice memorandum from the senior engineer, it references the town ordinance. If the build, if the, uh, building permit is 25,000 or more, there's an inspection required. You guys are aware of that?
Yeah, I have a problem.
No other questions?
They're looking for illegal some pumps. Uh, Mr. Hein, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I just had a couple. Uh, one is, how many bedrooms do you plan on having in each unit?
The second floor is currently.
Sir, if you could please just introduce yourself, if you would please.
Sorry, uh, Mike Scarpa, 751 Center Street, Wallingford. Uh, the second floor is currently configured for, with two bedrooms and the first floor is currently configured with two. And it may possibly go to a three, uh, barring that there's adequate space for it.
Okay. I, and I just ask, uh, because one of the comments, um, from the town planner was, uh, that we, there's some concern about making sure that the use is not more intensive than, than what's already there. All right. And there's going to be two units, that's it?
That's it, correct.
Well, I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Any other commission members? Mrs. Hand, any comments that you may have before we go to the public?
No, um, we went quite round and round about this for quite a while because it's, it was sort of a, a puzzle figuring out what the, the history of the piece was and trying to determine what the current use category should be and therefore, um, what they could pursue or, or what they should pursue. So we kind of settled on, um, there had been at one point, I mean, at various points, it wa- it appears to have been a two-family. It appears to have been the store with two-family, the store with one. It was reclassified by the assessor as a one in 2008. But the components of the other use, some of the components of the other use were maintained. The law is, um, if there's not an intent to abandon, um, just because it's empty, that doesn't, that means, that doesn't mean that you've actively abandoned it. Um, so, so that was sort of how we arrived at, um, this point, just to give you a little bit of history.
Thank you. I guess from my perspective, I certainly could support the application. I, I think the use that you're proposing, uh, I don't think is, i- i- is any more intense than what could be there with the store and the one unit on the first floor and the, uh, a unit on the, on the second floor. So I, I think this is a, a good use or perhaps reuse or renovation of the property. So with that, again, this is a public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak on the application, if there are, please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Hand, any final comments? Uh, any commission members, any final comments? Applicant, any final comments? At this point in time, I'd entertain a. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a special permit changed from one nonconforming use to another not more intense nonconforming use for Scarpa to allow the conversion of 222 North Cherry Street from retail one dwelling unit to use two two dwelling units, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Seat Engineer dated June 7, 2018. And number two, applicant is limited to no more than two bedrooms per unit.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next item, which is a new business item, with the site plan for a 700 square foot lobby addition at Heritage Baptist Church, 161 South Whittlesey Avenue. Again, if the applicant and/or his representative, please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And Mr. Monterazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a correspondence dated May 21st, 2018, um, referencing site plan application 206-18. Uh, interdepartmental referral referencing application 206, 206-18 dated 4/18/2018. Uh, an interdepartmental referral referencing the application 20, I'm sorry, the previous app, um, reference was signed by the fire marshal. Um, the second, uh, referral, uh, referencing the application 206-18 dated 4/18/18, uh, also signed by the fire marshal. And we have a set of plans, uh, dated, uh, received, uh, June 8th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Monterazzo. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
My name is Dan Lyon. I'm the architect for the project at Heritage Baptist. I'm an architect with an office at 4 Simpson Avenue in Wallingford, and I have with me today Tim Bish, who is a member of the congregation at Heritage Baptist. And we are here to get permission to add a 710 square foot memorial entrance lobby to the Heritage Baptist Church, which is at 161 South Whittlesey Avenue. And some of you that have been around a while will remember that it's the old Whittlesey Avenue School. Anyway, we've, um, uh, you have in front of you, I believe, the site plan, and you can see the little, uh, 710, uh, proposed addition. And then we've got over here a rendering, um, showing it in relation to the existing building. Um, I think we've addressed the, um, uh, questions that have been forthcoming from planning and zoning, but we're here to answer questions and go from there.
Good. Thank you. I guess I'd start with Mrs. Hand because there was some questions apparently from our planning department on this application.
Um, so even though this is, um, a, um, sort of an entry or like a vestibule addition, once you're adding on to the building, you sort of open up that, open up the whole site to compliance with the regulations. Um, so the applicant has had, so I had some comments about, um, some relatively minor but some nonconformities or site plan issues that had to be addressed on, um, the site plan, and generally they've all been addressed. I actually, um, after I got revised plans called the engineer last week, and he made a couple more tweaks for me, um, so that, those were the plans that you guys got. So, um, I think pretty much every, all of my comments have been addressed. The handicap spaces were brought into compliance with, um, or the wheelchair accessible spaces were brought into compliance with ADA requirements. Um, the, uh, dumpsters have been called out for screening. The spaces have all been brought into compliance with, um, parking size requirements. The driveway will be widened, um, the proper notes were added. Uh, the one outstanding issue, um, to be discussed tonight, I believe, is, um, uh, street trees or the front landscaping requirement. So they have added, um, proposed trees along Ward Street. Uh, there are not, and I did drive, have to drive back by to check this because I couldn't remember in my head, um, but as the plans indicate, there are, um, on Whittlesey, there are street trees in the town right-of-way, and there are quite a few of them. Um, I think there's one tree on that side, um, actually on their property. Um, but this is in a residential zone, so typically with your commercial uses or with any, it's really with any non-residential use, it's one tree every 50 feet. Uh, but that really is a comp, this is in a residential zone. It is a gra, their entire front yard is grassed, um, which is what the, the regulations call for, um, on both sides. And so the street trees really accomplish, um, what that regulation is intended to accomplish, but I wanted to put that out for decision or discussion with the commission.
Sure, I think from my, from my perspective, if there's certain, because I also looked at it to see where the trees are on Whittlesey Avenue, and if we were to require them to put trees on their property, I, I think it would just be a little odd. I, I, I think the purpose of having the trees there, they're already there, they're mature trees, and to put some two-caliber, two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees on their property would, to me, would not serve any real benefit. I'm not sure what other commission members would feel, but I, I think that's the general consensus.
Yep.
And as far as the trees that are proposed on, uh, on Ward Street, I'm sure it says on the plans, but what size are those?
Two and two-and-a-half inch caliper.
And what type of tree? Mr. Austin would love me to ask that question.
I, I don't think we've identified them. There'll, there'll be, um-
I think the plan calls for flowering dogwoods.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any commission members with, uh, questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen?
Um, I just have one question and, and a comment, and my comment is, it's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
It looks fantastic. Um, and, and, you know, the brick's going to match, and I think you did a real nice job. It's, it looks beautiful. Um, my, my one question is, are you going to hold any events in, you know, it's a fairly large lobby area? Do you have any plans to-
Um, Tim Bish is with me, and I'm going to turn your question over to him, but the, um, the lobby is a memorial lobby in memory of, um, the present pastor's wife who died last year, uh, Mrs. Bish. And, um, so she apparently had the, um, reputation of being a really friendly greeter down there, and so we're, uh, putting this up, and it will continue to be, uh, friendly. And Tim, is there anything you want to comment?
Uh, my name's Tim Bish, 383 Glen Hills Road in Meriden. Uh, the whole point of this is actually just, uh, as it's stated, it is a lobby. It is right next to, and one of the entrances, you'll see right on the site plan there, leads right into the auditorium gymnasium. The whole plan is literally just for people to pass through, um, as they're coming in and out. Uh, ladies with possibly crying babies pull them out of the service so that there's somewhere close by. Right now, the only way to get them out of the service is to literally walk in front of everyone, which as you can guess is, is not exactly ideal. Um, my dad is actually the one donating most of the money to build this. Uh, I am an assistant pastor there at the church, and like, uh, Mr. Lyon said, my mom was known for just the biggest smile and the loudest laugh you've ever heard. She made best friends with people at the grocery store. And, uh, the whole point of this is just to have somewhere that's nice, welcoming, and, and Mr. Lyon did an amazing job tying this in with the existing architecture and just taking what is right now a flat, empty paved area and turning it into something that's functional and beautiful, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing if there's no more questions, I assume that, uh, you have no further comments?
I don't.
Is that correct?
Correct.
At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Heritage Baptist Church for a 700 square foot lobby addition, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner dated May 21st, 2018. Number two, comments of the town of Wallingford Fire Marshal's Office dated 5/15/18. Uh, question for you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do we need to waiver these trees or leave it alone?
Yeah, the requirement, the way it, the regs read is that part of it says that you should have trees that are the 50 feet apart, um, but then it says in residential zones, it shall be appropriately grassed with appropriate tree, or grassed with appropriate trees and shrubs. So if you find those to be appropriate, I think that's sufficient.
So not leave it?
For a residential zone, yeah.
Okay. And that, and that's it for my motion?
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next item is, uh, a site plan for a 403.75 square foot accessory apartment for Dee Courtwright at 3 Longview Lane. Again, if the applicant would, after these gentlemen leave, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for her presentation. And Mr. Monterazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a correspondence dated May 21st, 2018, uh, referencing site plan application 207-18. Uh, we have a interdepartmental referral, uh, application 207-18 dated 4/25/18, uh, signed by Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer. We have another interdepartmental referral, referencing the application 207-18 dated May 14th, 2018, signed by the fire marshal.
Thank you, Mr. Monterazzo. If the applicant would please introduce herself and please explain her application.
Hi, I'm Donna Courtwright. Did you need me to spell it? I don't know what it is.
No, I think we're good with that. If you could just please move the microphone just a little bit closer to you.
Okay, um, we built an addition, uh, quite some time ago, and there was a lot of, um, confusion and miscommunication, so, um, I'm here to, um, just to have it finally approved, I guess. I mean, we had, you know, permits that were approved and we paid taxes, and I thought we were all set, but clearly we weren't, so.
So just so I'm clear, and Mrs. Hand, you correct me if I'm wrong, this is an existing, uh, accessory apartment? Is that correct? That we're looking to, this, the applicant's looking to get, obtain approval for? Is that correct?
Yeah, and there was some, I mean, there was conversation with the planning and zoning department at the time that it was done, and there was some back and forth about, I think with the homeowners associate, association was involved about whether it was an apartment or wasn't an apartment or would be an apartment or would be an apartment. So at this point, we feel it is an apartment, and so it does need to get the appropriate-
So the final determination is it's an apartment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And I think, just so I'm clear, it has a, you know, it has a kitchen, a bedroom, living, living quarters, there, a, a, a bathroom, whatever, for that?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, commission members with any questions for the applicant? Mr. Monterazzo?
Mr. Chairman, um, has the, um, apartment or addition been inspected?
I think that-
Yes.
Well, I think that would be one of the requirements also, if we approve this, to have our-
Well, I, previously, when we had gotten our permit years ago, everything was approved and inspected, and we had signed off on it. I mean, the town, someone from the town signed off on it, but I think you have to do it again because in the letter it says- Yeah, so the building department did sign off on it back then. They did their inspections, but we'll do a final measurement just once, once this is approved, just to confirm it for our purposes. But they're well within the size, so it's not going to be an issue for us.
Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the application unless you'd like to talk some more.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Courtwright for a 404 square foot accessory apartment at 3 Longview Lane, subject to inspection by the town of Wallingford zoning enforcement officer.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, Casey, moving on. At this point in time, I guess I will turn the meeting over to you to move on to our recommendation for road acceptance and all the other items, which are on the agenda.
Um, Dogger Drive is almost ready, but not quite, uh, so we'll post, we'll hold off on that one. Um, 5 to 9 Barnes Road, same thing, not quite ready. Uh, number 12, 1094 North Colony Road, that is ready for, uh, actually, the, I'll say the next three are ready. Uh, items number 12, 13, and 14, so 1094 North Colony Road, 3 Powers Road, and 1092 Clintonville Road can all be released.
Can all be released?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion, uh, to release the, uh, the bonds on items number 12, 13, and 14, as recommended by our town planner?
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to release the bonds being held for, uh, Infinity and Route 5, Green Warneck at 3 Powers Road, and Rafone at 1, um, 1,092 Clintonville Road as recommended by the town planner.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and moving on.
Okay, um, town center zoning. So, uh, in your packets, you did receive, um, the modified or adjusted proposed or adjusted draft map for the town center zone, um, as discussed at the last meeting. Um, and I apologize, you only got a black and white copy in your packets, which isn't all that helpful, so, um, I did pass out colored copies. There are more available, and there will be more available in the office. Um, I also provided, um, the sort of latest and greatest in terms of, uh, draft regulations based on our, um, last meeting. So we've now had several meetings. Um, there were just a few, uh, final sort of tweaks in, um, in the one that I handed out to you. Uh, let me see here. Uh, so there was one thing I want to mention that I, uh, added on page three. Um, the, uh, residential units, um, we're saying that the way the language has always read is that, um, they're by special permit, um, and are, shall not be allowed on first floors in the current CA6 zone. Um, I'm also recommending that, uh, they shouldn't, they won't be allowed in basements except by special permit, um, because that came up recently, and we don't really have a regulation to address that. Um, and then everything else, uh, is as discussed at the last meeting. Um, so, uh, I think, I think the commission wanted an additional opportunity from the last time to, to look at these a little bit further. Uh, I, there is one other thing I should say about basements, um, on page 11. Um, in the parking requirements now, you made the determination that, um, it, uses would be interchangeable within the existing building, um, without having to, uh, accommodate changes in parking requirements that would normally apply. And what sort of came to my attention is we hadn't talked about basements, and there are some buildings in the proposed town center zone that have basements that are currently used for storage, um, or something sort of like storage. I don't think it was our intention to say that those can now be used for, um, other types of uses if they can't accommodate the parking requirements. So I'm suggesting that we add that in there. So in your language that says you can kind of interchange the uses in the building, I propose some language that basically says not including basements. Um, and those are basements that are typically mostly below grade. Um, so again, I think that's not really what we were anticipating when we're talking about, um, promoting different uses and sort of providing ease of uses within our existing buildings. Um, so if anyone has any comment or, you know, doesn't want to do that, um, we can take that out. Uh, but that was really the only additional change. Um, I know the commission wanted some additional time to look over everything, um, so it's sort of, I don't know if you want to have more discussion or if you think these are ready to be scheduled for public hearing at this point.
As far as commission members, I believe Mr. Cohen has some questions, as well as Mr. Fitzsimmons, so we'll start with Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, just a quick question, I think, and I, I hope I'm remembering correctly, um, but, uh, you know, at the last workshop, we talked about some of the density-
Yep.
-requirements.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, we had some thoughts from the developers and, you know, I think one of the takeaway- takeaways was to get some densities of some of the other properties.
Yeah, and, oh, go ahead. So I did start putting that together, but I haven't finished it yet, so I'm getting a spreadsheet for you guys.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Casey, a specific question on page six and seven.
Okay.
And I'm trying to read it, and I didn't want to say at the last meeting, but under the last letter K, it says separate and distinct entrances shall be required for first floor and upper story uses. The entrance to the second floor use may be located, I think it's a title, it says at the, within the building frontage.
Yes, so it should just say within the building frontage.
So can you explain that to me, when you say within the building?
Yes.
Because I couldn't figure the proper usage, and I'm trying to think of an example of what it would look like.
The, and maybe there is a better, obviously, I struggled with how to say it, too. So the, one of the comments that Mr. Lazarus had stemming from the draft regs was, we have this requirement that second story uses have to have a second, have to have a separate entrance. His comment was sort of, can it be in the front of the building? Are we allowing this secondary entrance in the front of the building? And I think the answer is yes. And then, how much of the building can that occupy, especially if you had more than one? So if you had more than one entrance to the upper story, presumably, we want to allow that, and we want it to be able to be decent sized and be a nice entryway, but we don't want it to take up, we don't want to have all these entrances taking up all the building frontage, because that takes away from our pedestrian friendliness. So that's the intention of the language. Maybe it would be better to say may occupy a portion of the building frontage? Rather than located within the building frontage?
If I could through you, his concern was, I'm trying to think of Steve's concern. He wanted to make sure it was included, meaning you could do it. And I'm trying to think where it would be, so if I think of a building, I'll think of a building like Mr. D's. So you got the coffee shop, Mr. D's, and the center door brings you upstairs.
Right.
So is that a good example of what you're talking about?
Yep.
So you have three, a use, an entrance, and another use.
Right.
So what's his concern there? He wants to be able to do something like that.
So I think the question was, one, would we let them do that, or would that door to the upstairs have to be in the back of the building? And then, two, how much of the building could it take up? So again, presumably, we want to allow it to be nice and be a decent size, but if you took that building and sort of extrapolated it, would we really want those upstairs entrances to occupy?
Equal.
We would want to make sure they didn't occupy too much of the frontage.
Yes.
So to, I think he was looking at, would we allow it?
Right.
His suggestion was yes. And then, how would we sort of keep a restriction on it?
If I could through you, Mr. Chairman, I guess, just maybe you can clean up that language, because if I'm thinking of that example, it works, that building, it works, but I see where his concern would be, is you don't want the second floor entrance to dominate the first floor.
Exactly.
And it doesn't have that building, but I get, yeah, so a portion of, maybe just if we can clean up that verbiage, because it was confusing, there was extra words in there, but I now understand where his concern is. And I would agree, you'd want a nice second floor entrance in the front of the building where appropriate, so, but you don't want to over, you don't want to dominate the frontage.
Exactly.
Yeah, I get you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Anyone else? I think it brings us to a point where what we would like to do with this, if we would like to schedule a public hearing next month, or if we, prior to that, scheduling it, if we'd like to see the various densities, so we can, you know, have a, at least a discussion, or at least have some thoughts prior to the, you know, the public hearing on that. The other thing, I would note that for next month's meeting, it could be also an extended meeting. I know that we have a continuation of the application for the Sandbarrens, and I know that that took up, after watching the video, four hours. I'm not certain with the changes that are being recommended, what's being recommended, what's being presented, as far as the amount of time that that application may take. We also have the Paradise Hills that's coming up, and that could or couldn't be an extended application. I certainly know when we've had other applications dealing with wineries, they've certainly been rather intense. So I guess I would ask commission members what their thoughts were, would be with respect to holding a public hearing on these regulations. You know, if it would be for next month, for the following month, or whenever. Mrs. Han, I guess before...
Yeah, if I could just interject, from a procedural standpoint, it would be, it would probably work better to schedule it for the August meeting, rather than the July meeting, so that we can submit the formal application as a receipt with the formal attachments for the July meeting, and that way, you would have the public hearing scheduled for, I mean, we could make it work for July, but just procedurally...
So your recommendation would be for August?
Yeah. And that way, I could give you the density information.
Yeah, when do you think, if we schedule it for August, obviously, you know, the density, if we can get that within, you know, several weeks, that would be more than enough. Does that make sense for everyone?
Sure.
All right, why don't we go in that direction? And I guess also, we've talked about the regulations, the other is the map, if anybody has any questions on the map. And do we have colored maps also, Casey, for, Mrs. Han, rather?
You should, did I hand them out to you, or no?
Uh, no.
Back and waiting.
Thank you. Oh, that's fine. And again, if anyone has any questions, it is all of the items that are in purple, correct? I think seeing none, we're probably good to go with this. And if you'd please continue.
So if you want to maybe make a motion to formally submit an application and schedule the public hearing for August?
Sure. We have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule a public hearing for our August meeting on the Town Center Zone and map.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and moving on now.
And just so everyone knows, there will be formal notices that go out to the property owners and those within the 500-foot range. And copies of maps and regs will be available in our office, and will be put up on the website. Okay, LED electronic message signs, so you have, as you're aware, a moratorium on those. We haven't had a lot of opportunity to discuss regulation of those signs. We did have one workshop where we talked about them. The, and I sort of provided for you kind of an updated, the outline that I used for that meeting, and then what the general responses were. So I do have some direction for some suggested regulations, or at least some regulations to consider. I've also put it out to the listserv that I use to kind of find out what the other towns in the state do or don't do. I did not get a lot of responses. I got three responses, and usually, you get a pretty decent amount of responses. So that sort of, I asked a follow-up question, but that sort of leads me to believe, and I've looked through several towns' regs, some towns, it seems prohibit them, a lot of towns seem to not really address them. So, and a fair amount of towns do seem to prohibit them, so we can maybe talk about that further. So what I have done is submitted an application for your receipts, that you got as part of your receipts today, to extend the moratorium by an addition, hopefully, a final six months, so that we can talk about this, decide if you want to regulate them, and I can get you some suggested regulations, or if you want to prohibit them, we can pursue that, too. So I think at this point, you will have, as a public hearing next month, an extension of the moratorium. I wanted to get that in, sort of, in case that's the direction you wanted to go. The alternative would be, I suppose, to try to get something in between now and August, for the August, for public hearing in August, but I think that would be pushing it. So my recommendation would be that we move forward with extending the moratorium, and then schedule a workshop to talk about this.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that there's, you know, there's certainly some options. One option is, again, as you mentioned, to put some regulations together. Another option, it would be to do away completely with, or not allow for, those types of signs. I'm not suggesting that that's what we should do, but I think, you know, by having a workshop on that, we can certainly discuss the various, you know, the various options. And also, if, did I hear you correctly, Mrs. Han, that you are drafting or putting together some suggestions that could, if we wanted to go that route, as far as those types of signs?
Yeah, so...
You gave us a lot of information, but it would be nice, when we do schedule the workshop, to have at least, you know, something to discuss.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, is based on the outcome from this original workshop, which was quite a while ago, I could start to put together something, so you have something to talk about.
So we have something to talk about, good. Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, that works for me, but I did have a question.
Sure, absolutely.
If I could. You know, we have the moratorium, is there any, you know, grandfathering issue with existing signs at this point? You know, I think, you know, which one I'm talking about on Hartford Turnpike? And I drove through town, you know, a few weeks ago, and I noticed another one that was quite the same, and I'm thinking, I hadn't seen that one before, so I'm just wondering if we have to worry about that.
Yeah, and I think the answer's yes, in short. There are, I can think of three, three or four sort of electronic message send boards that are in town, the big signs, and then I can think of probably four more that are like the smaller, they're under the other sign kind of thing, and they do one message at a time. So there are, there are a decent number of existing ones, and those would be grandfathered in under the existing rules. So they, the rules for them are, they can't scroll, or flash, or play, so if they're doing those things, we can enforce that, but whatever you decide won't apply to those signs, unfortunately.
So that being the case, the sooner, the better.
Yeah, no, exactly. Well, yeah, at this point in time, we have a moratorium, but yes, but I, because this is the, our second extension of the moratorium, is that correct? So I think that, you know, at this point in time, certainly, somebody could make an argument, if we just keep extending and not doing something, that we're being unreasonable and not taking any action, so.
Yeah, and I know there are some people that are interested in it, and are waiting, and haven't been able to move forward because of the moratorium, so, I mean, I think that's a good thing, while you're deciding what you want to do, but, yeah.
And Mr. Madarazzo, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question about the grandfathering of existing signs. If we addressed it in a way that if the sign becomes removed, or any inoperable for any, whatever designated length of time, that the grandfather clause now refers to whatever we put in place going forward, so that the sign essentially is not being replaced?
Yeah, and I think that, that's a good point. I mean, we have some of that in place now, if you have an unconforming sign, you remove it. But I can, I'll talk to the law department, too, in terms of if it's not operable for a certain amount of time, can we then say you've lost your grandfathering? Certainly, if they remove it, we can include that, yeah.
Moving on.
So I have a copy of the decision in the lawsuit from, by Bristol Myers Squibb, in regarding to the regulation change that we made for the IX and I-5 zones, and we did win that case.
Just one thing, and Mr. Fitzsimmons mentioned to me at the beginning of the meeting, when the, I take it the law department is the one who receives this, correct? If you could ask the law department, when they do receive a decision, anything relating to planning and zoning, if they, when they receive it, I won't say immediately, but immediately, put it in the mail for everyone, because I suspect most commission members, you know, we found out about it, I think, when we saw an article in the, you know, in the newspaper, and I'm not sure how many days that was after the decision, but there has been in the past, sometimes where we're a little bit late in getting the decision. I think that would be, would be very beneficial, so if you could ask the law department to do that.
Yeah, and they usually send it to me pretty quickly, so I can also email it to you guys. So that's a good point.
Yeah, if you would. Thank you.
Okay. Administrative approval, you just had one for change of use at 1163 South Broad. That was something you did approve a while back. It was approved for office space on the upper story, and now they want to have a limited yoga studio up on the upper story.
Nice.
ZBA decisions, both applications from last month, or both applications that were acted on from last month, were approved for a detached garage and a covered porch. There are three applications coming up, and also, I will note, there was an application that was continued in regard to, in addition to a house. So in the applications, the new applications, I guess the one I'll point out to you is the one at 570 Center Street, which is the gas station next to the, where the state has been doing the work there, across from Vinnie's Deli. So the state's been doing the work on that road bridge for quite a while, and there's a gas station right there. That is in a residential zone, and they, so it was grandfathered in, not allowed to expand. They had actually approached you guys quite a while ago about looking at a neighborhood business district, or something like that. That hasn't sort of been at the forefront of, you know, you've had some other things that have taken a front seat to that, and so they did some remodeling within the existing building, and sort of crept outside of their permitted grandfathering retail area. So for the most part, they haven't been able to expand within the existing building, but they did turn the, what was their office into part of their store space. You know, they're very clear that they can't go any further than that, but it is still an expansion. So I don't know if you want to comment on that one or not, and then the other two are for residential, one's for a detached garage, and one's for a second floor addition to a house.
Anyone would like to comment on any of these various requests? I think the general consensus is no.
Okay. Zoning violations, I... Zoning violations, I will, as usual, leave it to you for questions, comments, updates, et cetera.
Anyone with questions on zoning violations? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I actually have several things. First one, Casey, is, you know, I keep going back to the cemetery.
Yep.
Because, you know, we had that, that violation with the little roadway there, and, you know, I've been wanting to find out if there's any, you know, people buried underneath that.
Yeah.
And I wanted to get a status on that. And additionally, you know, last month, and I don't know if this is the same violation, but there was a violation for, you know, Town of Wallingford on Prince Street, and I don't see it on this month's zoning log, and I don't see it as being resolved. So, you know, I want to get a, get a status on those two, the cemeteries you were at with that, and, you know, what that Prince Street violation was.
The Prince, was the, I don't know the answer to that. I will have to find out from Amy, because I don't know, I wasn't aware that we had a violation on Prince Street. So I will have, I will get back to you on that one.
Yeah, it was, like I said, it was on last month's zoning log, and it's not there this month, and it hasn't been, you know, notices closed. So, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, it's, because it's not listed on the closed either. Yes, let me find out about that for you. The cemetery, the issue with, or the question you had about whether or not there were bodies buried in the vicinity of the wall, I did speak to the cemetery, and their representative, or his, what he told me is that they do have record of where all of the bodies are buried, and that they don't, that they don't believe there's anything buried, there's anyone buried over there. The second part of that is the issue with, or the question that came up with the wall itself. So that was part of an approval by the commission for the new building, was to allow an accessway between the cemetery and the building. What does need to be done, now that that has been settled at the state level, the one thing that does still need to be done there is that that driveway kind of isn't constru, it kind of peaks and then drops off. So we, I think the town had stopped work on that while the issues were being settled, and that does, I talked to someone about that recently, so that does need to get addressed, and I'll, I'll follow up on that to make sure the driveway gets, because it needs to be constructed correctly now.
Right. So when that, you know, gets done, I think just for my peace of mind, and maybe, you know, part of the public, you know, and the state archaeologist, you know, apparently has weighed in on this at some point, you know, if we could, you know, he's got some ground penetrating radar or something.
Yeah, I know you've mentioned that.
You know, take a look there.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I'll be honest with you, I'm, you know, I was part of that decision, and I, you know, I'm kind of upset, you know, because I keep talking about it, on the way it ended up. It really did not end up the way I thought it would, with, you know, what we approved, so that's kind of why I, you know, keep harping on this. And then, and thank you, I appreciate that. And then the last one I had was, and I'm trying to find it, but it's, it's a violation that cropped up just this month, and it's on that wine company?
Okay, yeah. The, and I was actually thinking of bringing that up, because it's somewhat involved, and it's got a lot of moving parts, and we've got a lot going on with it. It's 65 South Colony Street is, some of you may remember was previously the Crush Club. Now is, there is, where located in there are the Eatery, the Southern Connecticut Wine Company, there is a fitness studio, and a, a small office, small single user office. So it's two down, there's the corner of South Colony and Quinnipiac, and then there's, which has, the buildings right on the corner there, there's the old Jake's Building, there's what Cricket Wireless was in there, then there's the plaza that has like Stella's Pizza in it, the Portuguese Club, and then 65 South Colony. So that building was grandfathered in for an old retail use. It was the cabinet shop in there, and it's sort of evolved over, so it's, there's very limited parking there, and it has sort of evolved over time. There were some, when the Crush Club located there, there were some limited variances. There was a limited, they held some events without any approvals. We issued them violation notices, they got variances, and the variance allowed for 12 events per year. Beyond that, the only thing they're approved for is their manufacturing of wine, and they were allowed to hold classes, and to have tastings at the end of the classes as part of the classes. Beyond that, nothing, no, it's not approved as a bar, it's not approved for tastings, it is permitted to have retail sales, because that's part of the grandfathering. It's not approved for events, other than the 12 per year, and the 12 per year were supposed to be by invite only, and there was discussion about the parking. And then similarly, the other uses in that building, oh, and there's also the cleaner in there, that's, that was existing, grandfathered in as storage. So the other users in there are also grandfa, based on a grandfathering, so they cannot exceed the amount of parking that they're grandfathered for. So the Eatery is a retail restaurant, so it's grandfathered in under the retail component as a retail restaurant. That means it's limited, limited to three tables and 12 seats. We have had some back and forth with them in the past, but they do, as best we can tell, and we do do inspections there, they do comply with that. So in their case, they're a high, they're successful, they're a higher trip generator, or a higher parking generator, but they're compliant. So what I, the conversations I've had lately are, you know, sometimes people comply, but they're successful over time, it sort of is what it is. The other users in there, again, are subject to, so the fitness studio, when they came in, there was an agreement, because there's not a specific requirement for recreational facilities, there was a specific agreement in their application that they could only have a certain number of clients in order to stay with their grandfathering. So, long story long, essentially, what has happened is that the, some of the users in there have, have been successful, and some of them have very, on various, at various levels exceeded what they're permitted to be doing on those properties. So they have sort of gone beyond what they can claim for grandfathering, and what has happened as a result of, not only as a result of that, but partially as a result of that, is that it's creating a parking problem. And sort of in addition, but related to that, so if, if everyone, is that a lot of those customers for that building are parking in one of the adjacent parking lots, and they're creating a parking problem for that adjacent parking lot? Now, that's not a zoning matter, per se, that's a private trespass matter. So people are lazy, they want to park, where are the closest parking spaces? You can't blame them for that, but they're not allowed to do it. You can't park on somebody else's private parking. Like I said, that in and of itself is not a zoning matter, per se, but what is a zoning matter is if they're exceeding their zoning approvals, and they're exacerbating the problem. So it's gotten to the point where there is a significant, there is some significant exceeding of what's allowed, and it's making the problem a lot worse. So we've gotten involved on that end, and we have, we've sent violation notices, we are working with, and having pretty constant conversations with the tenants and the property owner. It's unfortunate, because it's nice to see when businesses succeed, but that property is, the reason it's limited is because there's limited parking, and it's limited to the grandfathering, and it just can't support anything beyond that. So that's kind of where that stands. So we are working, you know, we've been answering a lot of tenants for the, questions for the tenants, they have, they all have 30 days to comply, and the notice was issued about two weeks ago. So it's sort of, there are some other issues. The wine company had set up a outdoor seating area, which is not permitted. We've also involved the liquor commission, because there were some non-compliance issues there. So I think we're moving towards compliance, I hope we are, and, like I said, it's sort of unfortunate for everyone involved, and it's nice, it's nice when businesses succeed, but they, you know, it's not fair if they're infringing on someone else, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. I did take a ride down there this weekend, and you described it perfectly.
Okay.
As far as the parking, I think, you know, I'm not going to solve the problem here, but, you know, there were some dumpsters and things, if, you know, they moved them around, you could get a few more parking spots in there. And, you know, I did see some of the signage there, very difficult to read, and I think if, you know, the owner, you know, the business owners, you know, there's parking across the street, you know, near the railroad station, if they put up some other signage saying, you know, there's additional parking, you know, across the street, it's not that far to walk, but, you know, I didn't see anything like that. I just, you know, saw some signs saying, this is for, you know, such and such a business. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else? Seeing no other business, I'd call for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Let's not all jump into motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, or adjourn. Have a good evening.